So we'll.
The, we will resume our meeting, our three San Juan Batista, special council meeting of April 28, 2020, now session again.
So everyone can see the screen?
Yes.
Good. Okay, thank you. Just want to confirm. I received a Zoom bingo game that had all the typical things. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yeah. I think that was one of the squares that you could check. Okay, so even today was super busy as far as trying to track all the different ideas, policies, and other things related to COVID-19. So this is our update, reconfirming that we're still in a state of local emergency pursuant with municipal code 5-33040. So as far as federal policy changes go, getting right into, starting from the Washington DC to California to our wonderful county, the biggest change in the federal policy programs is that the SBA loans and grants were refunded again and the portal reopened yesterday.
Yay.
Only to crash.
Oh.
This doesn't surprise anyone. I was disappointed to hear that on the first go around, only 15% of the California applications were honored. They are still being processed, so we know of at least three businesses in San Juan Batista that have applied for both the EIDL loan and grant and the PPPS for the unemployment and personnel costs, for both of those programs. So, and that the unemployment benefits that were extended to sole proprietors, that became available for people today. So those are the two changes I'm aware of on the federal level. Today's presentation by Gavin Newsom was an important one, and I'll just summarize it here. If you, oh, sorry for the typos. If you have a chance to see it on YouTube, I highly recommend that you do. He reviewed the status of the six benchmarks that we've been talking about. The first one is testing and then being able to trace people, taking care of our assisted living centers, and having the ability to respond to a crisis if there was an urgent outbreak. All of these criteria need to be met before he would begin considering lifting the shelter in place. Having said that, he announced his strategy for reopening, saying that we are, that there were four phases to that, and that we are in, we're about to begin the second phase of reopening our community. So the first phase, of course, was sheltering in place. He's got 80 new testing sites. He's testing about 20,000 a day with a goal of 60,000 to 80,000 a day, and these things are just coming online. So it sounds like the state is making progress, and that's very encouraging to hear. So the fourth phase plan, as I discussed, phase one is sheltering in place, and phase two could start in a few, two weeks, and phase three would start in months, and phase four, sorry for the typo, when a vaccine is prepared. Regional adjustments will be allowed, and that's important because we'll talk about the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning, but he wants to be sure that different regions have the ability to customize their shelter in place strategies moving forward. So the phase two that we're getting ready for has been talked a lot about the Board of Supervisors, is reopening less risky businesses, and he was referring to retail, retail that could use curbside delivery and so forth, manufacturing of nonessential goods, the curbside pickup of anything, could be fast, could be dinners, could be groceries, could be nonessential retail items, and then reopening more public spaces. And then he spent a lot of time talking about schools, which was interesting. Phase three would open in months, he said, when the higher risk businesses could be prepared to make adjustments. This includes the most personal care, such as beauty salons, gyms, and opening churches and weddings, and that's a particular concern to us because there's a lot of folks who are not coming to our city because the mission is closed. So this is, this is beginning to look at groups larger than 10, I presume. But the problem is, is that creating a safety protocol for these types of businesses is going to be a lot more challenging. So as we work on these more challenging protocols, hopefully the results and the data will continue to be stable, if not decreasing, and within that window, in a few months, we would be able to get back to having larger gatherings and opening more of our retail. Phase four, he referred to as returning to normal, having a vaccine in place and beginning to invite the large events back. So he thought that would be six months, if not longer. So that means the festival's returning downtown maybe six months away. So keep our fingers crossed that a vaccination or some therapeutic treatment comes faster rather than slower. So he's developed something called Digital Workspace, where he's working with professionals in each different business type to develop a protocol for opening. So we talked, I think, Tuesday last week about having a protocol for grocery stores, a protocol for different types of businesses. So he's working with the hospitality industry, of particular interest to us, to find out, you know, how do we manage a hotel, how do we manage a restaurant, and maintain these separate spaces, and the face masks and the gloves and the other PPE, and make sure that that PPE is available. So that's what we're working on now, and the state is guiding that effort. It would be very helpful if they came out with a set of criteria for the various business types, and then all we would have to do is implement them. Because last Friday, we were talking about creating those ourselves, and that's a big workload to handle. Interesting comment on schools. He talked about the learning gap that our children are going through right now because they're not in school, and he's hoping to open schools sometime in July. So I'll take that message home with me and further depress my teenagers. On the county, the county level, they have a new dashboard that's out, and this is an interesting statistic from their most recent dashboard, talks about community transition peaking in March, and then the person-to-person transition peaking later in the month of March, and then both tapering down. So these are good things. 883 tests, and we increased from 45 to 48 cases. So that's very slow, and it looks like the sheltering in place is working. And the most exciting thing that was announced this morning at the Board of Supervisors meeting is that San Bernardino County was selected as a new testing site. So of the 80 new testing sites that the state is rolling out, we're going to have rapid testing in our county, which is great, because the only way out of this thing is knowing for sure who has this disease. The Board of Supervisors today was, well, I heard the term Friday used as vitriolic. There's a lot of community members who are, lost their patience with sheltering in place and expressed that before the Board of Supervisors today. So we're not surprised to see just a few minutes ago, a press release announcing the resignation of Dr. Marty. So that saddens me and us. He's a great asset and a great team player to have. So he was doing his best with the data he had, and at the Board of Supervisors was roughed up pretty good. So sorry to hear that he's leaving. Nonetheless, there is follow-through to help businesses open as fast as possible. So can we get started on setting a protocol? And this is what's talked about at Friday's briefing for businesses, and that's when Jaime de la Cruz, the chair, asked that the mayor and vice mayor be present at a meeting tomorrow at 2:00. And we are ready to meet tomorrow at 2:00, and I'll bring Liz, our community liaison, who started last Monday, and a member of our business community, so that we can provide a San Juan Batista twist to the policies and procedures that we developed to help our businesses reopen. So we may even meet twice. We may meet Wednesday and Thursday, because there seemed to be an indication that the shelter in place policy would be relaxed when it expires May 4th, which is Monday. That's not what they did to the north of us. They extended it through the end of the month, and 48% of our cases are from people who work in the Bay Area and then commute back to our county. So that's why we've been so conservative, and it's been effective. So there was just a lot of pushback from the business community, and unfortunately, a lot of those businesses that stood up, well, it's unfortunate, first of all, that the Board of Supervisors meets before the governor's briefing, because the governor made it quite clear that the businesses most anxious to open, that were most vocal this morning, the gym, the yoga, the hairdresser, are all in that category three that the governor summarized. And we heard Friday that perhaps we were going back to this, to simplifying the shelter in place by just saying, you know what, the county's not going to have a shelter in place, we're just going to rely on the state. But the state intentionally drafted there so vaguely to allow counties to tailor them to their own needs. And so that was the pickle that happened this morning at the Board of Supervisors, the decision to stay with this county's current shelter in place policy, and then the decision whether or not to extend it. So I imagine a slew of press releases coming Friday at 5:00 to 5:00. So don't order your don'yaesters until you've got all your press releases answered and figured out. So that was where I was last Friday. So anyway, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine being at that board meeting today. And then, of course, the sign-up for NICSIL, which is how we get these press releases. So we launched our new community liaison program this week, and I just want to say my hat's off to Liz. She's hit the ground running. Yesterday, she was on the phone to six or seven businesses. Each case is different, so each one, some are afraid to apply, some haven't applied, some were frustrated. She's just been a really great liaison, helping people figure out the maze. Of course, City Hall remains closed, but we did open La Park on Monday, and, but unfortunately, other sports playgrounds have to remain closed. So we had an inquiry earlier this week about pickleball, and it's a court and then a sport, so it needs to stay closed for now. But I invited the pickleball fan to get back to us in the next couple of weeks, and maybe we'll be able to start that back up again. Exciting that Rich Brown was hard at work last week and this week, gathering 1,000 masks that are being made by volunteers who are being paid. So for $5 a mask, I'm glad we had the budget, the $20,000 set aside. We began handing out masks, and the superintendent of schools was most helpful. We gave them 200 masks on Monday, and they were gone pretty quickly. So tomorrow, we'll be at the community hall, and we have a whole program lined up with safe distancing to distribute masks at the community hall. We'll have 700 or 800 of them if necessary, and there's some left over, we can give them back to the school to hand out. People can come by, with an appointment, they call first, they can come by City Hall, or come by the fire department if they can't make it and they need a mask. So those are handmade cloth masks, like my own, that people can, I'm sorry, I've been wearing my mask all day, handing out. And that's the status of where we've been working, and I'm happy, Mayor, if anyone has any questions, we can, I'm happy to answer them. Let's see. Oh, the postcards went out for the mighty networks. They were mailed out Monday, and we have been receiving some, well, we refer to them as loud complaints from residents about homeless people in RVs and cars. And this is an issue for us right now. Rich and I tried to respond to a couple people this week and last week about some people who just haven't been moving on, and Rich is stumbling because our authority seems to be undermined by the impetus of helping homeless individuals and not stepping on toes there. So the governor has issued some executive orders that make it impossible to evict homeless people from the community. So that's unfortunate. We're having to work with the sheriff's office, and if there are other things that we can do to help them, we've tried. So we're working closely with Health and Human Services to bring services to these folks. There aren't any here readily available. I know sometimes people refer them to the mission and to others, but we've had some neighbors complaining about cars that never leave, that have people sleeping in them, and it's something that we're aware of. We have an inventory of it, but we haven't been very successful moving them on, so.
How do we move them on?
We have to rely on the sheriff's office to move them on. So they've been slow to respond. We were hoping to have them up on Sunday, and it didn't come, so. So with that, are there any questions about the status of things COVID-related?
So Vice Mayor Leslie, do you have any questions?
I do. We, the, sorry, the masks is a face covering, not necessarily a mask?
Yes, the press release was a face covering.
So we have to get that out to our local businesses because people are being turned away because they don't have a mask. So we have to make sure that we get it in their hand, that it's a face covering, not specifically a mask.
The San Juan Committee's been really helpful communicating with the business community?
Is that it? For this, yes. Councilman Flores, do you have any questions, comments? I think he muted.
He's muted, yeah.
Sorry, no, no comments.
Okay, Councilman Freeman?
I can only add to what Don said, from what I understand, the testing location's going to be at the Bethance Hall in Hollister, and if it works out well, they might actually have one in San Juan. They didn't say where, so.
Yeah, that's on the testing. I do have a comment on the masks, and I know the ordinance didn't go in until Monday, but I, I was curious. I went to Windmill, and Rick had got down to, you know, go into the store, and I noticed that there were several people going in without any masks at all. So I decided to get down and go look myself, and there was a notice, there was no notice on the door, and I'm just wondering if the businesses will have a notice letting the public know that they have to have a face covering. But the majority of the people, I would say probably 90% of the people that were in the store had no face covering at all. The, of course, the clerks did. They were working with their face masks, but I'm wondering, how are we going to handle that?
So that's the way the sheriff left it, that the business owners would enforce that, and Rich did take note of that first thing Monday morning, and spoke to the owner of the Windmill, asking him to enforce the policy. But that's as far as we're going at this point.
It was the Windmill that said you have to have a mask.
To go in?
Yeah.
Mask, not face covering.
Not face covering, but a mask, yeah.
Yeah.
Did they turn that?
Several. Yeah, I heard from, I heard from a couple of people.
Well, Sunday, there were a lot of people. I don't know when this took place, but Sunday, there, I want to say, the only one wearing a mask in the store was myself and Rick.
Yeah.
We were the only ones. No one else was wearing masks, other than the clerks.
Gas station today was the same way. No masks, nobody, except for me.
Wow.
So, well, and that, is Captain Taylor on?
Captain Taylor, are you available? I thought I saw him.
He mentioned the last time he was here about reverse 911, and I'm wondering if we have that capability in town here to utilize that and send a message to our community about face coverings?
I'm not sure if it's reserved, or what constitutes an emergency. I'm not sure the protocol.
Reverse 911 is not necessarily an emergency. It's a way of letting everybody know something that's going on. And I can't remember, I think it was Livermore used reverse 911 to put their face coverings in place.
We can look into that for sure. I can put the request into the EOC in the morning for sure.
Okay.
And the Emergency Operations Center at the county can ask that question, because I'm sure it would help other cities as well, Hollister.
Yeah, and they would go off of our water bills.
Uh huh.
Yeah, okay. So with that, we can go on to, let's see, you just did the COVID and update in the shelter in place, and now we go on to the fiscal year budget, 2019, 2020.
So this is, this is a draft review of where we stand. There have been many training sessions, and many municipal finance officers and treasurers associations getting together, advising cities on what to expect in the coming future. There was a recent advisory from the State Board of Equalization concerning sales tax and truing up, and that the May installment would show the first impacts from the emergency to the city. Along with the staff report I shared with the council, a letter sent by the League of California Cities, which I didn't copy for you, but in summary, it's asking the governor to do more. The letter was drafted after the CARES 3.5 Act was signed by the president because it didn't address the needs of local government, and it explained that maybe the state would be willing to share some of its CARES Act dollars with the majority of the cities in our state, or less than 500,000, obviously. So with that, Wendy and I have been working hard on trying to understand anticipated impact of the budget. 90% of the cities are laying off staff and going through budget reductions right now. That's a lot, 90% of the 400-plus cities in our state. So having heard that, and having heard that from the cities in our local region, both Monterey was looking at cutting off 107 positions, Seaside is 25%, and Marina 25%. We got out the General Finance Officers Association's little book on how to consider reductions in your organization. And the first, the first go-around, first of all, we looked at the revenue losses to the city, and Wendy and I worked on this together. Originally, back in the beginning of April, we estimated the general fund impact to be 190,000 per quarter, which is half of the general fund. So 50% of our general fund would be gone if the sales tax was at zero, which is the way it looks on Third Street right now. But, and we thought that this would be a short-term event, and the cities that we've been reading about and the advice from the League of California Cities is this is more like a three-year event. So a Band-Aid of using the reserves is not an appropriate response for a problem that's going to last this long, because before we know it, the reserves would be gone, and if there was an earthquake or other serious situation, then we wouldn't have anything to rely on. So just for an example, the last recession took 37 months to recover from. But this is unusual because it's a voluntary recession. Let's say, we can open all the businesses we want. If the people don't come, the people don't come and spend their money. So it's all consumer-driven. So that's where we stood as we worked on an analysis of our general fund revenue, and this whole report focuses on general fund, and there's a detailed analysis that Wendy Cummings, our CPA, put together for us, which shows only a 3% loss at the end and a $51,000 hit this fiscal year. We didn't expect that in January when we did our mid-year adjustments. And the reason it's a $51,000 hit is because we got a break in the interest being earned on our reserves currently. So 484 on the attachment page three shows that we budgeted less than we anticipate receiving. So that's a $60,000-plus number that offsets and helps us out and helps us get through the end of the fiscal year. If you just add the sales tax, 406, and the transient lodging taxes, 408, together, the net impact of that is 126, $127,000. So that is huge. That is huge to us. And so we started looking yesterday afternoon at our costs, and we started with staffing. And we have a vacancy in accounts payable, and came to the conclusion that in order to meet this, to meet half of this expense, the goal is, the goal is to meet not just the $51,000, but how do we, how do we, how do we take care of this going forward in July? Then we look at two full-time positions, and that was the accounts payable position and the associate planner position. Currently, the associate planner's been reassigned as a disaster services worker. There's a limited amount of work that we, that can be done in that capacity. And then we look at part-time positions, and when we added the part-time positions to the two full-time positions, we have four part-time positions. One is our PIO that's been reassigned as a disaster services worker, and is probably busier than she has been for the city. So that's a gift for us. But her partner has voluntarily resigned and is taking the unemployment from the state and the federal government now, so she is no longer on our payroll. Then in the, in the public works crew, we have two part-time positions, and we have one with quite a bit more seniority. And I had recommended in this staff report that we consider eliminating both of the two part-time public works staff, and I'm wondering if we have to do that. They're worth $1,200 to $1,500 of this amount, not much for what we get for the buck. So we have one who's able, a better position to take the leave and hopefully be hired back after the first of the year or so, and another that we need critically. So I'm kind of going back and forth on my opinion, since I wrote the report about both public works part-time staff, that we would only consider one instead of both positions. Looking for other savings, we have to go to our other biggest expense, which is our contract services. So under contract services, of course, our police and fire are our largest two expenses. We have our supplemental Level 1 private security services in that group. We have our CPA, and then we have our building official and foreleaf. The building official is paid for by fees from developers, so that contract, it wouldn't matter. If we cut that contract, it would not impact the general fund. We also looked at the city attorney's contract, and we're fortunate that we've been saving quite a bit of money. We learned that in December, that our expenses in legal services are lower than they have been. So without reducing services, we're hoping we could reduce that contract by $20,000. And then we looked at private security services, and there's a potential, if the council's willing and if the contractor's willing, to reduce that to weekends only, and I believe the contractor's online, so we can hear directly from them, Level 1. That would save another $14,000. So together, the $30,000 in salaries and the $34,000 in contractual services would be a total of 64. And if we can carry that 64,000 in savings forward, then we'd be able to fill the hole that's currently vacant in our general fund. It would add up to $768,000 over 12 months, and we have a $700,000 hole currently. So whether we make the decisions, as I've put out here, I've put out some recommended solutions. It's up to the council. But we want a little wiggle room going forward because our LEF, our local agency investment fund, if that interest rate goes down, then we're going to be back in a deficit mode again. So this was my effort to share with the council, a proposal that would take effect June 1, and be implemented through the operational budget for FY 2021, some steps that we can take now to avoid using our reserves. So I'm hoping there's lots of questions.
Lots.
And we can dig into it.
You spoke so fast. I'm trying to jot notes down all over the place. No, no worries.
No, that's okay. You've got it here. Did you get one of these?
Yeah, I did. So I have notes all over the place. I have lots of questions.
So what we'll do is, we'll open it up to council. So Councilman Flores, do you have any comments or questions? Okay. Councilman Freeman, comments or questions?
I have a question on the public works worker, the two part-timers, and you said that you would actually like to keep one of the part-timers because you get a lot of pay for the buck. So how much would keeping one and letting the other one slide off the table?
It's about $1,500 a month. So rather than 64, it'd be closer to 62,500.
And would that still get us to cover the hole, or would we be a little short?
I think we would be okay, and we could re- I think we would be okay and, and we could reassess it in December.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dan's not there.
Dan's not there.
Is there someone out there, Dee? Is that Dan? Dan, can you hear us? Okay.
Okay, it's not him. So Vice Mayor Leslie.
I also have questions on the public works people, the part-timers. What are, can I ask what their positions are?
They're just maintenance, what, what is the position title, Trish?
Maintenance worker one, yes.
Maintenance worker one, the part-timers, the maintenance workers ones? Yeah. So they're generalists, but...
They have nothing to do with water and wastewater?
Well, as generalists, we all do. So if a pipe breaks, everyone's got to pitch in. But, but for the most...
They're not certified operators, sorry.
No, no, they're not certified. The, the position that we recommend retaining has been specialists, keeping our restrooms and other facilities cleaned and wiped and taking care of our parks. So he supports our full-time maintenance worker in that regard.
That aren't open yet.
That aren't open yet.
Could we furlough and bring him back when we open?
When I talked to our supervisor, Nick Bryant, he, he mentioned the possibility of furloughs versus termination.
And I, and I don't know what the terminology means necessarily.
Right.
Like, do we still pay them on a furlough or can they collect unemployment either way?
As, as I know it, and, and Nick brought this up, instead of 20 hours a week, we could reduce the hours. So when I personally experienced furloughs, I had every Friday off. And I got a 10% pay cut as a result because I was a salaried employee. So he was willing to keep this employee onboard for 10 hours a week instead of 20, which is much like a furlough. And then, and then if we had the capacity, he could go back to 20 hours a week.
Okay, that might be amenable to that.
Would he qualify for, for unemployment?
No.
No, he would not.
No.
I'm sorry, Leslie.
No, that's a really good question.
I'm not positive, but I don't think so.
Probably not.
You have to be like completely unemployed.
Yeah.
That, that was a conversation we were having with the library staff. It's like, well, are you, have you resigned or haven't you?
Well, there is a section where if you, your hours have been reduced.
Oh, okay.
And you can collect for...
For the loss of the reduced hours.
Loss of hours.
Yeah.
That would be a possibility.
I would like to see that, whether this person or that position can get compensated for unemployment either way and which would be better for that person. Sometimes unemployment is, pays more than actually working.
Right. In this case, the employee is receiving a retirement, so that has to be taken into consideration too.
Right. Okay.
Say, say that again, Sessa.
Pardon?
Say, repeat your, your comment.
My comment was that most people who are unemployed are getting additional $600.
Oh, I'm going on unemployment.
I forgot about that.
Because I have a, I have a brother-in-law that got laid off and he's making more money now in unemployment than he was when he was working.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I like those stories.
So, I mean, that...
We could always maybe think of laying him off with the idea, once we get back, we could, you know, give him...
First priority.
Shot at that.
First priority. That's, that's common in a lot of union MOUs.
Yeah.
Where you, you have callback, it's a callback provision.
So by doing this, how would, would that help us with, with not cutting back on level one?
Oh, wait, well, I'm not even there yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I tried to break these into pieces for you so we could talk about salaries.
Yeah, no, no, thank you. That's all right.
Okay, so water and wastewater, our water and wastewater contracts weren't mentioned. Are our employees, are they certified operators? I don't remember what...
No, we have two employees, I believe, that are working towards that end. We have, we have a D1 in water that's, was up for taking the exam, we're studying it in March. And I don't know what happened to that class, but...
They pushed it off?
He was attempting to become a D2.
And we're a D2 water system?
Right. That would, that would give him the training necessary to run the filtration plant, for example.
Oh, that's water treatment. Does that not call for a treatment certification?
I'm, I'm not positive on that.
Okay. So I don't know if there are more job responsibilities that our employees can take over, that our, maybe not so much our wastewater operators, I mean, our wastewater plant. But for water, for water, divvying up or, or reducing some of that contract to have our personnel go back to looking at tanks and taking chlorine residuals and taking samples. No special certification necessarily. And they could be working under the certification of our designated operator, as they are already. So reducing, and both, even for wastewater, taking samples and bringing them to the laboratory, having our people do it instead of contracting that out could be a potential savings.
Were there other tasks? Well, I can work with the crew and we can come up with other tasks perhaps.
Yeah, and I, I would love to be involved with anything water and wastewater going forward. And then police and fire.
But, but let me just pause, let me pause for one second.
Yep, go ahead.
The reason I didn't look at the water and wastewater is because they're paid by the enterprise fund. We're focused on the general fund.
Ah, that's right, that's right, that's right.
You had me going down there.
I know.
You had me going down there, Trish. Why didn't I think of that?
Yeah, 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 okay. Thank you for that.
But, yeah, okay.
Okay. Good call, well done.
I, I was feeling really dumb there for a minute and then I realized I had Wendy helping me, I couldn't...
Wendy, speak up! Okay, and then CPA and attorney, thank you Deb and Wendy for everything you do. I so appreciate you and what you do. Same with police and fire, can't really reduce that. The, so then that brings us to level one and a couple of notes that I have, oh, that are on my phone. It, it makes me very nervous reducing that contract, especially when you used the word... I don't remember where I wrote it down.
The triolic?
That's the word. People are getting antsy now. You see it on the roads. You see it in our little town two weeks ago when kids decided enough was enough and we're going to go play football every day and we don't care what the sheriff says. And then we have kids coming from out of town and shooting us up. I think reducing a security company who has, since their inception of the town, of coming onboard with the town, has significantly reduced crime. Before they came on, we had a horrible crime spree. Margos, the Mission Cafe and one other business was, were broke...
It was the third store.
Broken into several times. We have not seen that since they've been here. They stopped what could have been a, a really, really bad situation in front of a bar that no longer exists. And with all of this sheltering place burglaries and, and are the only crime that have the potential for rising during this shelter in place? I am super hesitant and I have lots more stuff to say about that. But I'm, I'm hesitant to... They're the ones who are here calling the sheriff's department if they see anything. And nothing against the sheriff department and, and the state parks. Thank God they were here. And the fire department were here two weeks ago, right before level one got on duty. I, I don't know. I think we, they thwarted a lot of bad stuff. And caveat, this does not get me any monetary gain for them being here or not being here. I, I mean, it doesn't matter who the security company is or would be or was. Having somebody have a presence in town has been huge. They know the, the city. I'm nervous about reducing it to weekends.
She took the words out of my mouth.
Sorry.
I, I, you said everything that I was considering, but I, I was going to point out that since, since they've been here, we have had less crime. And, and it's true, everybody was getting broken into. And I think that, you know, having them here throughout the week, the way we do, has really helped us. And I, I don't know. I think, I think that's a mistake and I, I really feel that we need to find money somewhere else.
Okay.
And, and sorry, I'm reading off my phone because I took, I scanned a, a copy that I gave Mary. Last, I think it was last week's meeting suggested that they even come on during the day and perhaps work with Rich in some capacity. And perhaps we can lessen his hours again, sorry, Rich.
No, Rich is plenty busy doing non-enforcement things.
And I know he's doing other stuff besides code enforcement, which...
And the shelter in place.
Absolutely.
And the protocols that the governor's talking about for each business. And employees wearing face masks, one restaurant, yes, and the other restaurant, no.
Yeah.
That would be legwork that would save your, Rich's trouble.
Right, absolutely. He's done a tremendous job. So in that vein, is level one being underutilized as we're talking about reducing their contract? Are they being underutilized? Is there any way, and I, and Deb, you said something about this at our last meeting or the meeting before. They're not capable of executing any code enforcement functions. Can we make that happen? Can we direct their, their, level one's efforts in a different direction? Can we utilize them for warning notices for a lot of the code enforcement stuff, parking, whatever? Is, the longer this goes on, the more nervous it makes me, not so much for our little community, but for the world. You know, how tense are people going to get? And...
Well, I think we got a little bit of a taste of it this, that this morning.
Yeah, we did. Deb, did you want to talk to that?
Well, what I know about that contract is that we had to negotiate with ParsAC, who's your insurance pool. And Kim Ahn was very hesitant about this arrangement and then talked into it under certain protocol. And you didn't want them issuing code enforcement, you didn't want them carrying guns or any kind of weapons. And I think we'd have to start with ParsAC because I think it's possible for Doug to possibly delegate the authority to an outside person, but it would have to be approved through our, our carrier.
Okay, and I understand that. Rich does code enforcement and doesn't carry weapons. Can that be, can, can something like that be delegated to level one who, if directed appropriately, do things like that?
I think we're going to look at it, I think Doug would have to delegate the authority, I think it's Doug's authority, but we have to look at it and clear it with ParsAC.
Talking about level one's contract, Trish, and ParsAC's review of it, they were, they were hesitant to give parts, level one too much authority?
That's right.
Yeah. But what about code enforcement? Did that come up at all with level one and ParsAC? Do you recall? Trish just re-entered the room, so you know.
No, what the, the concern was is any weapons are carrying or any devices, as I recall.
And, and they don't, is my understanding, they don't in the city.
And that was ParsAC's request, but level one was a little bit persistent that they could, that it never, because ParsAC said no, that it does not. And I think that we put that in this last contract.
Yeah, we did.
Who's ParsAC?
We're part of a, of a, of a joint pool insurance authority. So our little city leverages with, with other cities and agencies.
They're part of the term, something in...
Joint powers.
Observe and report?
Observe and report, that was the orders.
And then Deb, Deb mentioned another name, Kim Con?
That's the executive director, that, that's, that's the boss at ParsAC.
Okay, all right.
That's all.
All right, I'm just, I was just wondering.
That's fine.
Just curious.
Yeah, yeah. So, right, observe and report mode.
Which is what Rich does when he does code enforcement or when he was doing code enforcement.
Well, he's, he's citing and he's, and he can, he can make things happen.
So while he's doing other duties, sorry, this is costing the city. And I know we're trying to save money.
That's right.
I'd rather not reduce that contract and... I'm nervous.
Say, say what you're going to say. Maybe that's what we're here for.
I don't know if I can. No, it's, it's... For any of our contracts, if we reduce them, is there the possibility of backlash? I don't know. Do we have a, is our, do we have a three-year contract? Do we have a one-year contract? If we were to get rid of our attorney or our accountant...
Right, it varies.
In the middle of a contract, do they not come back and say, sure, we'll leave, but you have to pay us our whole contract?
I don't think we have any contracts like that, but, but it would be a negotiation, which is why I was offering a month for implementation. So if we were going to go back and research some of these other issues, we'd have a chance to do that.
Okay. I just don't want anything adverse happening to us in the interim.
Right, right. No, that would be my job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And, and Deb, unless it was her contract. So did you want to take it?
So, okay, are we done?
No, did you want to take it out?
Take it out.
Do you have anything to say?
Oh, I, Sessa, do you, do you have any comments or questions?
He already did, he said none.
I thought, he will have to wait there.
He said none.
Yeah, he said no.
The concern that I have is that public safety should be number one. So if we start messing wrong with public safety, I have some problems. That's, that's what I meant.
Thank you.
And Deb may be on the line and I haven't heard from John.
Councilman Freeman?
I thought I talked about it before, but...
Yeah.
I, I, I don't see level one reduced pretty much for all reasons that you and us like states. I do think they do somewhere between a pretty good to a very good job of, you know, helping out. So maybe if, I know that's a pretty big contract, maybe if we can just, you know, go for a couple of months and then take another hard look at it, not just at the contract, but our finances, see how the, if, if the shelter in place go on, is, is, what are, what are our tax revenues look like? You're kind of checking out in a couple of months from now instead of making a decision... You know, check it out in a couple of months from now, instead of making a decision.
Okay.
Especially since this is a public meeting, and we're talking about reducing our security.
Yeah.
Hi.
Unfortunately, it's gotta be public when I ask that question.
Absolutely.
I asked that question. So is, is Dan?
Is Dan, Dan, Councilman De Vries, are you there? I don't think you're there. No, he's not there. Did you see Kim Ahn?
There was someone signed on as D.
Oh. Okay, all right. So is there any other further comment?
Oh, the public.
Any public comment?
I see Jackie's out there and some others, so probably there are. Thirteen.
So, ready to give a public comment now?
Yes, please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. My input, our two foots were...
Name.
Who's speaking, please?
Is this Jackie?
Can you hear me?
Yes, but who, who's speaking?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's Jackie Marsloka, Samo Batista. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So my public comment regarding the contract for level one, I agree, I think it would be too abrupt and early to look at containing their contract. I think that they've done a great job. You know, they made a point to like get to know the community, get to know people. Like my husband, who doesn't look like criminal, goes in the post office two years ago, and the guy stops him. But eventually he gets to know that, hey, I'm a citizen here, and they're friendly, and they look out for us. I feel though that we need to be careful, and this is where I think our city attorney would probably be doing her investigation, is about how much enforcement, well, what kind of code enforcement are you talking about? Because they are not peace officers, they're private security officers. So we really have to look at that, otherwise we could get ourselves into some litigious situations, which we don't need. One of the things that maybe you can look at offsetting some of the costs of their contract is why not talk about, we have just a handful of them, and I can think of right off the bat, and it's the largest, is the dense living situation of the Mission Garden apartments or apartment homes. They have a lot of individuals that live there, and I'm assuming that takes a little bit more patrolling by level one. Has anyone ever thought about maybe talking to the property owners of such places where the level one is gonna have a little bit more work cut out because of the density of population, to have them kick in some funding?
Kick in some what?
Funding.
Okay, yeah. That could also be said for both of our new developments. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie, were you done? I guess so. Any other comments from the public?
And I can throw out one bone, something I forgot, but also a bonus. I was talking with Rochelle today about our summer programs, and she'd written me a summary of, of a way to reprogram, $10,000 set aside for summer programs, because we can't obviously bring the kids to the library under current conditions. So she was proposing a cool online program and asking for half of that money to use for that program. And I promised Rochelle I'd bring it up today, but that would take care of 5,000 of, of at least a piece of the, the level one, the savings that I was hunting for. So I can throw that bone out there. With the council's okay, then Rochelle can get started on her summer reprogramming.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Wendy Coming, your accountant. And, you know, I think that, you know, the level one, the savings that we were anticipating for level one, there's only 14,000 of the, of the $64,000 overall savings. I think that we can look at other expense line items and come up with solutions. Or worst-case scenario, yes, we do have general fund reserves, which we're trying our hardest not to tap into those, not knowing, you know, the, the journey that we're going on for how long. And I also wanted to say that we're presenting this analysis through the end of this, just the year, just as first steps. Next steps is, as we learn what other cities are modeling their revenue strength with, what they're anticipating, then we'll start diving deep into our, our next year's budget. But we wanted to get on top of this current year's, make some assumptions, some predictions of what our revenues will look like and what the impact would be. But again, I mean, it's all clear that you all want your level one services, and it is 14,000 of the savings that we're anticipating. And I think that we can look other places and come up with another solution.
Good.
Thank you, Wendy.
If they're patrolling wastewater and drinking water facilities, could some of that money come from the enterprise fund?
I hadn't thought of that. They're, they're not necessarily, I mean, they're, they're in neighborhoods, so those are all alarmed. We pay an alarm system, so if a pump fails or something goes on like that. I don't know, I'd have to think about that. It's a bit of a stretch.
Vandalism? I mean, if the wastewater plant or the tank site, do they go up to the tank site? Do they patrol up there?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think we want to be cautious about shifting funds or expenses or expenditures to the enterprise funds. We want to make certain that we need our debt covenants, our existing debt covenants to figure out.
Absolutely.
And we're running really narrow there, so that would require a little bit more analysis. We could sort of find ourselves on a position that we're not in compliance with the covenants.
Yeah.
Right, just trying to throw so, something out there.
Yeah.
Sure, sure.
No, that's what this is about, creative ideas.
Okay. Any other comments? It doesn't sound like there are.
Oh, somebody just chimed in.
Do we have an issue on Rochelle's?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that, where were you with?
No, I'm, I'm, I think we have consensus to move forward, and Rochelle can construct a modified program for the kids using half of the money that, that we've appropriated, she was comfortable with that. And we'll come back at next Tuesday probably with a detailed description of that for the city council.
Okay.
Okay, great.
All right, so...
Thank you, Seth.
Thanks for bringing us back around.
All right, now we go on to, are we gonna go on to the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget?
I think, I think Wendy summarized it. I think we're at the same target, about $60,000, $65,000 moving forward into July. And that would be a sustainable budget, even, even in this crisis. So we're fortunate that we have stable property values at the time, because that's the other half, the majority of the second half of our sales, of our general fund. So with that, I think we'll be okay, and we'll try and, it'll be hard to have a community budget meeting, but it would be much like tonight's meeting, I suppose. And a little, a little harder, maybe next time we do a closed session afterwards, just because it's less awkward for the community.
Yeah.
We learned something today, but, but we would have at least one community budget meeting in May, and then, and then come back with a, a full budget in mid-June.
And also, chiming in with you there, Don, part of our plan is to see what comes up out through the state, their revised budget projections.
Good, good, yes.
Providing heavily in other municipalities to help share their wisdom with us, and with their forecasting. When the, when the state comes out with their budget, they'll be a better measurement for us. So to come about next week, that might be a little premature for us to have a detailed discussion around next year's budget.
Right, no, for me, it would be. I need to breathe.
Yeah, poor guy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. So are there any other comments? If not, we'll go on to the action item, number five. That's to approve the affidavit of posting agenda. So do I have a motion to approve it?
I make a motion to approve the affidavit of posting the agenda.
I guess, and Seth's second, yes. Okay, so go ahead.
Councilmember Flores?
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yes.
Councilmember De Vries, staff set, as we see, Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Mayor Edge?
Yes.
All members of the council being present, except for one, the vote passes four one.
Thank you.
Is it four oh?
So now we go on to adjournment?
Sell food.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you to the community, stay strong, SJB strong.